Aloha and welcome. My name is Jantel Lindo. I'm the Chair of the Molokai Planning Commission. This is our Molokai Planning Commission meeting of October 23, 2024. It is now 11:16 AM Hawaii Standard Time. We're going to do a fast roll call. Commissioner Salario? Please state where you are and if there's any adults in the room.
Aloha. Here, I am in my room by myself.
Commissioner Hanapi Hirata?
Aloha, ana ka'ole. Kamalani Hanapi Hirata. I'm participating for the Molokai District Office during my personal time and in the same office with me is Chair Jantel Durualindo. Mahalo.
Commissioner Bishaja Orio?
Aloha. I'm logging in from my office at Konakakai School and no one is in the room with me.
Mahalo, Commissioner Debbie Kelly.
I'm in my office and I have a coworker, but I have my earphones.
And then I am in my office, Commissioner Hanapi Hirata, vote on personal time on her personal devices. So mahalo for joining us. We also would like to acknowledge Selena Panell, who is our Corporation Council Deputy Director Anna Lillis and our Molokai Staff Planner Sibyl Lopez and also Environmental Planner, oh, I don't know what is her new title, but Candace Thackerston from Department of Planning. Okay, we're going to speed through this because we're going to lose Commissioner Bishaja Orio. And if Commissioner Pfeiffer gets on, please let me know so I can acknowledge him. First off, the community is able to testify at the beginning of the meeting on any agenda items. And you would just need to notify the staff in the chat or raise your hand. You have three minutes to complete all testimony for all items at the beginning, or you can wait till after each item is called and we have our presentation. And after each item, I will open up public testimony, at which time you have three minutes to testify on the subject matter. You can testify in person here at the Molokai office with Planner Sibyl Lopez, 100 I Noah Street in Konakakai. You can also testify at our Maui location, at One Main Plaza, 22 Main Street, Suite 315 in Waileku. You can provide email testimony to planning@mauicounty.gov, or you can testify right here online via this method. We'd like to ask everyone to silence your noise-making devices and please refrain from having sidebar conversation or using the chat as a way to communicate with commissioners or each other. We would also like to ask that everyone keep their microphones muted and your cameras off, except for the commissioners, until you are called. So mahalo again. Our first item that we're taking up right now is our contested cases pursuant to Chapter 91-10 of the HRS and Subchapter 4 of the Molokai Planning Commission Rules of Practice and Procedure. So Special Management Area SMA Exemption Determination. Munakira Haraga, on behalf of Wilford Immorah Trust, is requesting a Special Management Area SMA exemption for the demolition of an approximately 1,200 square foot two-story dwelling located at 81 Ala Mama Street in Konakakai, County Town Business District, Alina Molokai. And the valuation is $6,000. The Staff Planner is Sibyl Lopez. Go ahead, Sibyl. Oh, and I would like to acknowledge Commissioner John Russell Pfeiffer.
Mahalo Chair. Aloha Commissioners. I'm Sibyl Lopez, the Staff Planner on this project before you today. Jan said this is a request, the department is recommending this to be an exemption, an SMA exemption under the Molokai Special Management Area Rules 12-302-12D. And it falls under the proposed action that is, this is not a development based on Chapter 205A-22 of the Hawaii Statutes under the letter G, which states demolition or removal of structures except those structures located on any historic site as designated in the National Estate Registries. As the project scope of work is, which includes the demolition of an approximately 1,200 square foot two-story dwelling, which is known as the Immorah Family Residence. I do have, and it is located in the Konakakai Country Town Business District. And I do have, excuse me, I do have the consultant and the applicant here today. And they do have a presentation for the commission. And I would like to introduce the lead from Munakio, and she would be able to introduce her team who is on here today. And she can go forward with her PowerPoint presentation. And Emily Marai, okay, I see her on today, and I would turn my time over to Ms. Emily Marai Munakio-Hiraga, or Chair if you need to swear her in. Thank you.
Actually, Sibyl, we're going to lose Commissioners at 12 o'clock. So is the presentation lengthy and would it be more advantageous for us just to get started in the discussion and have the applicant and the contractor or Munakio and Haraga answer our questions to suffice that so that we can expedite the conversation?
If that's okay with Carpencele and the commission and the applicant themselves, I don't see why not. There is a link to the PowerPoint presentation.
Well, and it was provided to us.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we did have time to review that.
Selena, is that okay?
Yes, that is fine.
Is that okay with the applicant? I mean, I don't want to be rude or anything, but I do think that they would prefer to expedite the conversation so that we can make a decision before we do tomorrow.
Thank you, Chair. And I do believe, I think I have Gwendolyn Rivera from Munakio. I think she would like to speak. Go ahead, Gwendolyn.
Oh, hi. Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Rivera. I'm with Munakio-Hiraga, here with Emily Marai from our company. It looks like Emily is not able to unmute. Is that something you can do for her side?
I was able to rejoin and it seems like I can. I'm all good now, so sorry about that.
Okay, but yeah, whatever way the Chair would like to handle the meeting, we're flexible.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me do this. I'm going to open up for public testimony on this item right now. See if we have anybody, including the applicant, who would want to give a testimony. And then let's get right into discussion, if that's okay with you. Okay, so at this time, we'd like to open up testimony from the public for item number one on our agenda for the Special Management Area Exemption for Immorah Dwelling. Is there anybody from the public wishing to testify? Aloha Chair.
Hi Chair. Hi Chair, this is Jantel. I see nobody online wishing to testify.
Mahalo.
Aloha Chair. This is Sibyl in the Molokai Office. I actually do have the owner here, Ms. Immorah, but she's not willing to testify as a testimony. But if you have any questions, she's here to hear the commission's deliberation. And I also forgot to introduce Stanley Solomilo from our Long Range Department. So he's also a resource staff in regards to the HAVs report. If you guys have any questions for staff, he will also be able to answer any questions in that capacity. So mahalo Chair.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Hi Chair. Commissioner Pfeiffer is on.
Yeah, I acknowledged her earlier, but thank you so much. Okay, so seeing no one wanting to testify without objections from the commission, we're going to close public testimony. Is that okay? Okay, public testimony is closed for this item. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or for Munakira and Haraga? Okay, I'll start this off. Actually, my question is, I want to mahalo Munakira and Haraga for the report that you put through. I'm not sure if my question is for them or for our county department's long-range planning and for Sibyl and whoever else is on here. I noticed that there was no written comments by the Department of Environmental Management, County Department of Environmental Management. And further, my question would actually be, I don't have a problem with the demolition. I think that it needs to come down. What I have, what I'm concerned about is does our current landfill has the capacity to safely allow disposal of this type to occur? And if it's good for one thing for right now, what are the measures the county is taking to ensure that the cumulative effect of arsenic and this Kneac going into our landfill is doing in the long range? And is our planning department and other agencies working together to ensure that if we are bound as a commission to allow these kinds of projects to happen for the safety of the people and all of this? Are we making sure that we are complying that where the demolition site is, is adequate to take care of the project? Anybody?
Mahalo Chair for that question. I'll probably take it in two parts because I probably can only answer your first part, which was if we, if the department transmitted for review to the Department of Environmental Management. And yes, we've done, I probably transmitted it twice to DEM. And we received response. And for your second part of the question, I will not be able to answer. Maybe I can defer back to the deputy on how we collaborate with other departments. Thank you.
While we're waiting for Anna, because she's probably trying to get us to answer. I just want to say that it's to me, it's super unfair to the applicant if we continue to process applications without doing our due diligence as a county to ensure that departments are working together for the safety of our community. So I do think that there was a need to ensure that Molokai landfill had the capacity to collect this very dangerous bunch of material. I also know that there are several buildings in the pipeline to be demolished that will have the same kind of hazardous materials. And so I just want, again, my problem is not with the project. My concern is with the ability for Molokai to manage the disposal of these things. And then for the department, my question, I guess, Sibyl, would be, when you cite that there are no cumulative effects as a way to determine an exemption, does the cumulative effect only consider the project area? Or does it also include the demolition area? The demolition deposit area. Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead Deputy. Okay, yeah, yeah, either way.
So with that specific, we look at the entire parcel of where the proposed work is going to be and that cumulative impact in that area?
So no regard is being done to consider the cumulative impact that is being hauled away from that area to negatively affect the area it's being dumped into?
So Chair, the best faith efforts that the department currently makes is to transmit this application to Department of Environmental Management. But given your concern for future projects, we're happy to do a little bit more outreach to them. You know, we can't compel any department to respond to us necessarily, but you know, things get lost. You know, I'm not sure why they didn't respond. But we can try to do more outreach to Environmental Management for demolition permits in the future.
So Selena, is there a legal mechanism to ensure that with the lack of assurance that Molokai could handle, because even with Munakio and Haraga and the literature that they sent through on their report of how to remove handling and disposal of Kneac, it clearly states a method of being able to dispose of that. So that's from the applicant. It acknowledges the way that you have to handle the material. But with lack of confirmation from our county disposal department and DEM to say that they have the capacity or their area to do it, is there a legal means by which we can pass something like this and be okay that it wasn't thoroughly vetted out? Not to anybody's fault, but is there a way to be able to ensure that before this is done, say we pass it? Is there a way, because this is not the client's fault, the applicant's fault. Is there a way to pass it and force that there are mechanisms or documentation in line to say that Molokai could handle this prior to the application, the applicant being able to start work?
So is your question, if you guys chose to defer this today because you wanted more information about the capacity of the landfill, if they can begin work anyway?
No, my question was if we decided to pass it, is there a way to be able to ensure that before they did any work, that the county could verify that the disposal would be done properly and was not negative, would not negatively affect the environment or our community?
Well, the mechanism for doing that would be then you had to, you know, to vote to defer it and request that information at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, I got it. Go ahead, Commissioner Hanapi Hirata.
Hi, aloha. This is Commissioner Hanapi Hirata. So I just wanted to make note of the packet that we received with this. First of all, there's no, I didn't receive any of the correspondence letters from SHPD. The only thing that was in here, even from Department of Health, it's basically like letters in this packet that reference what they told, you know, what they shared needed to be done, but there's, I would like to actually see the letters. So that didn't come in my packet, so I can read what SHPD had to say to State Historic Preservation. The other thing is in this packet, again, I don't see anything from the County of Maui's Cultural Resource Commission. Our last commissioner for that was Atika Malupoi-Poi. I believe she's off right now and they're going to replace her with someone else. But there's also no correspondences with the County of Maui's Archaeologist Dr. Janet Six to review this project. And then I had, I also would like to see something in here from the Hawaii Historic Cases, their review board, even get a clear understanding if any of these buildings are on the Hawaii National Register of Historic Cases, and if not, then just note that. In the presentation portion of the application, which is only a few pages, I believe on page 14, where it says Historic Documentation Number Three, well, there's only three bullets here, so the last bullet, it says on June 5, 2024, "SHPD confirmed that the residence demolition did not require SHPD review since there would be no ground disturbance." So I wanted to get clarification from the department. So you're saying that I see in all the pictures that there is concrete or cement slabs in different areas, whether it's walkways at the bottom of landing areas for stairs. So are they going to remove that by hand or they're using? Because if you're saying no ground disturbance, that means that no heavy machinery is going to be utilized to dig up these concrete walkways, landing areas? So is that what you're saying? Everything is going to be completely demolished by hand? Can I get some clarification on that, please?
We'd have to defer to the applicant for their disposal means. But Sibyl, did you have something else? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No worries. And yes, and I would want to defer all of the SHPD and cultural questions to our Long Range, which is Stanley. So I see Emily on here. She can answer the question regarding how it will be reviewed. And then we do have Stanley as well to address your concerns regarding SHPD and the culture components. Mahalo.
Emily, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You can proceed.
So we have, in the packet, you have demolition, demolition plan and notes. And it, you know, we do include the best management practices for sediment control, dust barrier installation. In regards to the ground disturbance in disposal, that is, my understanding is that there will be no ground disturbance. We do want to note that the contractor for demolition hasn't been contracted yet. But that is, there's certain provisions included in the request for proposal that will be sent to the contractor that they have to comply with. And one of those, you know, conditions or, you know, requirements can be to, that there is no ground disturbance because that is what is stated in the plans or in the proposed action. So that is what is presented is no ground disturbance.
Hi, aloha. So I just wanted to make one note here for the record that when you, you know, the State Historic Preservation Office is making one determination based upon what you submit to them in your FOCS packet, which you guys upload to HICARIS and all the documents. So when they say that there's not going to be no ground disturbance, they're taking your FOCS's word at it. Now, if your contractor later on is going to come in and say, "Oh, we're going to need heavy machinery to scrape up and dig up all of that concrete and cement that is there on the ground," that is considered ground disturbance. So then you stick SHPD in one box of, they don't, they do not respond to after the fact, after the damage is done. So perhaps one comment is that you should go get the contractor to come take a look at the site and help you folks out to come up and plan. Just because of the culture and significance of that whole area in the back there, that was where Kamameha had a huge area and there's so much different types of archaeological finds that's all in the back there. And so just making sure that everybody's on the same page. So I just wanted to note that and thank you very much, Emily.
Thank you.
Okay, mahalo, Commissioner Kelly.
Sorry, I had the same questions about the concrete. I wasn't quite sure how deep some of that concrete was, but I did notice that some of it was just above the ground. The other thing that I had questions on was in the general demolition notes, it says that it would be to demolish and remove all existing water lines, sewer lines, sewer manholes, gas lines, et cetera. But my question is, is there some water lines that is in the ground that has to be removed? As well as because that is a very old building, was there a cesspool on the property? And if the facilities was upgraded to the sewer system, was the cesspool filled in and is this, even with the store, any restroom facility, is it in the septic, the sewer system currently? Sorry. Can anyone answer that?
Might need to call on the applicant. Carolyn, are you able to confirm if there's septic or cesspool on the property?
Okay.
Hicas. Just want to make sure that you can hear. Okay, go ahead. Chair, you want to swear her in?
Yes, yes, yes. Can I have, can I have your name?
Can I? She's asking for your name. Carolyn Immorah.
Hi, Ms. Immorah. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You can proceed.
About the sewer lines, if there's cesspool, any other utility lines that would have to be removed with this project, that's what they're asking.
The cesspool is on the boundary of the demolition area.
Has it been filled or is it still in use? Or will it be removed with this project?
It should be removed, but there's still some use coming from the one toilet.
Okay, so my question is, is there future plans to build on the site after the demolition?
There are two separate buildings. The front building will be rebuilt. The back building, the family residence, will not be rebuilt.
Okay, yeah, I understood that part where there would be a rehabilitation of the store envelope, which means that it's only the outside, the exterior, that would have any improvements. Does that still stand?
In terms of the store, the purpose of redoing the building is to put in the double wall between the bakery and the store. That's the primary reason.
Okay, all right. So currently, the cesspool is being used, so it's not in the county's sewer system? Is that correct?
Is it in the county sewer system or you have your own? We can answer.
I have no idea. It's so old that I don't have any records of it.
Okay, so someone from the county, because every, if there's cesspools and everything has to be upgraded by a certain timeframe, 2050 maybe, is this something that will be addressed in the future? Especially if the cesspool, if it's in operation when the storefront, the store will be upgraded, that something will be addressed for that, for the cesspool?
Thank you. My understanding is yes, that it will be addressed.
All right. Thank you very much.
I I have a follow-up question on that. Um, so when you say that will be addressed, does that mean that what was currently being uh the plumbing or sewage that was currently or had been serviced by a cesspool would now um end up being part of the county system and wastewater treatment?
Um.
Or would it be a septic thing?
Uh, I think that D O H accepts either as the remedy. Uh, I'm not sure. I'm trying to look into that right now for for this project, but uh, yes. Connecting to county wastewater or septic uh is acceptable for D O H standards is my understanding without wanting to speak for them.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Uh, like acknowledge Commissioner Kaahanoi um in our meeting. Aloha. Okay, um, without any further discussion or um if the staff has anything else that you wanna say? Okay, without any further, oh, Commissioner Kelly.
Sorry, did someone answer the question about any water pipes that's in the ground that would be removed? It's part of the general um demolition notes? Because if it does get removed, that is ground disturbance. And it should be removed. Um, but yeah, would somebody be able to answer?
Commissioner Kelly, I think we're gonna lose quorum. So Chair will entertain a motion to defer. Um, and then see if, uh, let me ask our Corporation Counsel, Selina. If we asked to defer and we listed a bunch of things that um we felt was missing from here and applicant agreed to that, as um would that be a better method than us say denying this and and asking for it to come back as a SMA minor?
Well, I can't, can't say one is better than the other. I guess it just depends on what your, your, your purpose is. Um, i- if you think an exemption may be likely with that new information, then probably just keeping it on as is, just deferring it. Um, that makes sense.
Okay, Commissioners, you guys.
Otherwise you'd be, or otherwise you could deny it. Yeah, deny it today and then it would come back then the other way. So it just depends on how you.
Um, so Commissioners, um, to my understanding, if you feel that uh this does not warrant an exemption, then you would deny the application, at which point it would come back to us as an SMA minor. If you felt that this would potentially, if your questions were answered, still meet the criteria for an SMA exemption, then we would defer and ask if the applicant could suffice some of our answers. So the floor is now open for a motion.
Hi, hi, Commissioner, I mean Chair. I would like to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny from Commissioner Hirata any second.
A second.
Second, okay, second by Commissioner Pfeifer.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then um discussion. Uh, Commissioner Hanapi Hirata, you wanna speak to your motion?
Um, I wanna just say that I'm denying it because there's a bunch of um questions that we still have that's not answered. So basically the um, I know Chair, you've been taking um notes on some of the questions that we had asked um the applicant. Um, so my motion is to deny and hopefully they come back with all of the things that we are going to ask for. Um, so we can have a clear understanding and make one really good decision. Mahalo.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, if not, um, I'll speak to this motion also. Um, I would support the denial uh based on the idea that it it doesn't suffice this commission that the cumulative, that uh we can agree that there is no adverse cumulative effect by this project happening. I I wanna just say I I do not think it's all on the part of the applicant. Um, but I do think that there is not enough information available um to to move forward and feel comfortable about an actual exemption. So I do have a list of things that I heard the Commissioners saying Commissioners can jump in. Um, civil, you ready? Okay, first, um, a verification of proper disposal plan and disposal area from the Department of Environmental Management, specifically for Molokai landfill. Secondly, um, verify, uh, when you look at uh we, if the commission could get either from the department or Corporation Council, verification on compliance of H R, H A R, section eleven dash five four, one point one, three, four, uh through eight. Um, that addresses surface water contamination and clearly states that there will be no um uh effects to our surface water or any areas um in that proximity when the disposal is done at the Molokai landfill. I recognize that the report we currently have addresses that part of the law on the project area, but does not take into account being disposed near Manuainui. And the actual surface water waste close and adjacent to that area of our island. And so I would like to have documentation stating that um this is still the um, it feels that it it suffices this chapter of making sure that clean um that we're not contaminating any surface water areas at the disposal site. Um, also, um, verification of demolition plans from the contractor that states the type of ground disturbance and potential cultural and environmental um impact that may have to include uh sewage, cesspool, water lines, and any other infrastructure associated with this um with this project. I also wanna note that I didn't see anything in the report that took into account whether or not um there was hazardous materials associated with the pipes in the ground. Mostly it just stated the um regarding the building itself. And so just making sure that those things are also available. Um, verify that the water line and sewer mitigation or upgrades and removals are also supported by the fact that the Department of Health has stated that our current Molokai wastewater treatment plant is over capacity. So any plans that continue to fill our current wastewater treatment plant with more, when we already know that we've been fine and addressing overcapacity of Konakakai, to me should be addressed in a different way. So whether that's a septic system or anything, I think this commission needs to have verification that if we're going to allow the plan to be that they can tie into the um treatment plan, that D E M and and our departments are all on board on this to make sure that that's a good plan. Um, it doesn't make sense to me that we would include any additional taxing on our um wastewater treatment plant when we, when we currently are over capacity. But I'm not the expert here, so if we could just have some verification on that method and that plan. Also, um, solidify plans for hazard materials and residuals after the demolition is completed. Is there any kind of requirement to ensure that after you opal building is done? Do you take readings to ensure that um the area is safe before you start um rebuilding again? And then um include future plans to build after the demolition or if it's in association with this, that there's a part two to this plan? Uh, I think this commission is very interested in addressing whether or not the cumulative impacts of something is looked at as a whole picture. And when we get projects that are done piecemeal and all that stuff. And one of the um things I can cite is like in our packet, we have all these pictures of the inside of Evilmore's store. Um, but what we're being told is that it would only be um to put up that wall and adjust the outside. So if there are any other additional like um arsenic or kene that was used inside the store, that will now be a part of the overall project and improvement, I think those things need to be also included in the presentation and the packet. Um, did I miss anything, Commissioners, from what you guys said? Oh, cultural monitor on site and also input and comments from Shipti and our county archaeologists wants the complete solidified ground disturbance planning and all that has been done. Um, and that there is verification on what kinds of ground disturbance, if any, um, what kinds of mitigation efforts for replacing or removal of the current cesspool and water lines. And those things have been done, if we can have that included. Anything else, Commissioners, that I missed?
Just um one comment. In the has, in the hazmat, hazmat assessment, um, just to clarify how they're gonna contain the hazardous materials that they did identify um to consider the neighboring business and buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I I'm gonna add on to that. That's a very good point. Um, there is plans for how you're gonna demolish it and then where you're gonna take it. But what's not included is that plan between the demolishing, wrapping, how that's done and how you transporting the material from there to the landfill, um, what that entails and what the safeguards are. Okay? Okay, uh Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor to deny. Um, if we don't have any questions from staff, Chair will entertain a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any, any opposed? Okay, uh, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Mahalo. All right, um, there are no, go ahead. Sorry. There are no agenda items for future meetings. The completed Molokai applications are none. Um, and the proposed meeting schedule for the calendar year twenty twenty five, um, I think we accepted. Um, other than that, we don't have any more business. So without any further ado, I wanna mahalo everybody for being on. Thank you Commissioners. Um, Pfeifer, uh, Bishajario and uh Kaahanoi for making the exception to jump on and help us get this business done. So mahalo to staff, um, our Corporation Council, our community and our applicant. We mahalo you very much. Have a wonderful day and aloha. This meeting is adjourned.